Found one. I'll cheat. It was, it's this one here.
Okay, do you want to switch it out with this?
No, I just tried to bend it, so. We're fine. I'll leave it like that. Can you hear me?
Again.
All right, we're good.
Okay.
Anyhow, let's call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, in the best of the liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Council President Prince. Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
We'll call Mr. Mayor one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Albertson.
Move to excuse the absent council member.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Albertson, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that we excuse the absent council member. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. And we are on to the first item, which is a proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
All right, proclamation. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a national campaign dedicated to raising awareness about domestic violence, and each October organizations and individuals unite for a national effort to highlight the needs and experiences of survivors, and the city of Renton is proud to join this effort. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas it has been estimated that every nine seconds a woman is assaulted by her husband or boyfriend or intimate partner, and in more than half of these instances, children under the age of 12 are present. And whereas 2024 marks the 30th anniversary of the Violence Against Women Act, VAWA, which has changed our response to sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking while providing our state and community with services for survivors. And whereas more than half of abusers responsible for domestic violence-related fatal shootings were prohibited by law from owning firearms, and whereas domestic violence does not discriminate across its all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by indifference, whereas domestic violence is still one of the most dangerous calls for law enforcement and for the safety of those involved, along with the community as a whole. And whereas the national theme for Domestic Violence Awareness Month for 2024 is heal, hold, and center, the city of Renton reaffirms its commitment to a holistic approach to the support we can provide through a focus on healing, education, and prevention as tools to lessen domestic violence and control extending to, uh, to lessen domestic violence and control extending to all residents, including those most marginalized. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage everyone in our community to take an active role in supporting all victims so they can lead healthy lives safe from violent and abusive behavior and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed as seventh day of October 2024. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Albertson.
Move to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Albertson, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, accepting the proclamation is our own Tina Harris, the Renton Police Department.
Good evening and thank you. On behalf of the 14 agencies that we in the city of Renton partnership with, several are here with us this evening. We have Central Rendu of St. Vincent de Paul, Crisis Connection, LifeWire, Eastside Legal Assistance Program, Dawn, Domestic Abuse Women's Network, and Project Be Free. Throughout the month of October, we will feature these organizations and their programs to spread awareness of the help that's available for those experiencing domestic violence. Tonight, I am pleased to invite Katia from Project Be Free to say a few words about their program as our highlighted agency of the year. Katia?
Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, members of the city council, and community members. I'm deeply honored to stand before you today during Domestic Violence Awareness Month. All right. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to recognizing this critical issue and for providing a platform to raise awareness. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to illuminate the devastating impacts of domestic violence that has on individuals, families, and community. It is a moment to honor the strength and resilience of survivors, remember those who have been tragically lost, and renew our commitment to ending the cycle of abuse. It's important to remember that domestic violence isn't confined to certain days or months. Every day, it silently affects our community, surrounding us as an unspoken experience. Domestic violence can show up in the bread aisle of Fred Meyer, where someone mechanically checks their phone, hypervigilant about not provoking a fight by being away from home for too long. It shows up in our schools, where many of our youth and children grapple with conflict, absenteeism, and mental health challenges, unable to articulate the chaos they witness at home. Domestic violence even touches our law enforcement partners, who despite their role in protecting our community, may return home to turmoil and conflict within even their own household. Every year, millions of people are affected by domestic violence, and this month serves as a powerful reminder that it is not just a private issue. It is a community crisis that demands equitable collective action. At Project Be Free, we are committed to providing immediate intentional crisis response services to those impacted by domestic violence, especially in underserved and marginalized communities. Our mission goes beyond intervention. We are dedicated to breaking the cycle of intergenerational trauma by offering holistic services that address the unique needs of survivors and their families. This work is not just a profession. Many of my team members and other community DV advocates themselves are carrying this mission deeply within our hearts. We are especially proud to celebrate the city of Renton, which was the first to partner with our project, by implementing our services alongside the Renton Police Department. This collaboration marked a pivotal milestone in our work, enabling our team to serve over 1,350 households this year alone. What began in Renton has now expanded to four neighboring cities, and we are incredibly grateful for the trust and support that has made this growth possible. It is through partnerships like these that we continue to provide vital services to families in need, ensuring that every household feels seen, supported, and safe. None of this work can be done in isolation. We are deeply thankful for the unwavering support of the city, other domestic violence community organizations, domestic violence legal advocates, law enforcement, and all of the partners that stand with us in this fight. Your continued support allows us to keep providing life-saving services. As we move forward in this month of awareness, I encourage all of us to deepen our understanding of domestic violence and to make meaningful steps towards preventing it. Together, we can create a future where safety, dignity, and respect are universal rights, regardless of background or circumstance. Let us not only raise awareness, but also be the change that ensures a world free from violence. Thank you for your commitment to supporting families and individuals affected by domestic violence and for your stand with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, um, I invite all the service providers to come up, and we're going to take a picture here, so. Thank you. Well, on behalf of the council, I want to thank all the service providers that are here tonight and supporting our community. The work you do is very important, and we thank you. Okay, we are moving on to public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight, and the first is the Six Year Transportation Improvement Program, which is known as the TIP, and presenting will be Heather Gregerson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and City Council. My name is Heather Gregerson, and I am the Program Development Coordinator and Transportation Public Works. I am here to present the annual update for the Transportation Improvement Program. Jim Sights, the Transportation System Director, and Ellen Talbo, Transportation Planning and Programming Manager, are also here to assist with any questions as needed. The Transportation Improvement Program, also commonly referred to as the TIP, is a planning document that identifies transportation projects and programs that help implement the city's priorities. One of the most important purposes of the TIP is that local projects must be included in order to be eligible for state and federal grant programs. The annual update of the TIP is how the Transportation Systems Division plans to meet the needs of the city and adjusts to changing conditions while staying in alignment to city priorities. Changes to this year's document include an updated prioritization, project information and status, updated grants funding, the addition of several new projects, and removal of completed projects or projects that are currently under construction and will be completed later this year, as well as an updated appendix that identifies discrete projects within several of our safety programs. Working on the TIP is a continuous process throughout the year as projects progress forward and the city receives new funding. Tonight's adoption of the TIP essentially signals the start of work on next year's update. Each program or project is assigned a category type to help with organization and funding. Those categories include maintenance and preservation, which are projects that replace, preserve, or maintain transportation assets; operations and safety, projects that help with the safety and efficiency of traffic operations; non-motorized, which are projects that address pedestrian, bicycle, and transit networks; roadway corridor, projects that encompass multiple categories that typically result in larger capital projects; and then other programs and planning, which are projects and programs that involve regulatory compliance and other policy directives. Project aspects highlight that there are common threads across all items in the TIP. Each project or program page notes one or more of these goals that are behind the project descriptions. The following factors are incorporated to create the priority framework. The priority framework is used to create the prioritized TIP list, where each project is carefully reviewed and scored against each of these criteria. Criteria bands include safety, plan implementation, system integrity, financial directives, and mitigative. This map shows the 2025-2030 TIP projects. The pie chart shows how the TIP projects are divided amongst the neighborhood planning areas. The green pie piece at 28% are programs that are citywide or projects that are within multiple neighborhood areas. Funding status of each project can change very quickly from year to year. For example, if funding is made available by a new grant or when a major design milestone is reached. Candidates are projects that have no determined funding at this time, or projects that are regionally significant but will be led by others. Some candidates are ones the city is currently looking for grant opportunities for. In the TIP priority ranking, funded or partially funded projects are generally at the top, and candidate projects are generally at the bottom. This year, we put particular emphasis on prioritizing safety programs and projects, as well as sidewalk and other walkway projects. The TIP identifies secured or reasonably expected revenues and expenditures for each of the projects included in the TIP to aid in future budget discussions. This graph breaks down the sources of funding for each year represented in this year's TIP, which are years 2025 through 2030. This is graphical in nature and does not show potential schedule adjustments of accelerated funding from grant awards. The annual TIP development is just one step in updating and maintaining the transportation capital budget. Actual revenues and expenditures are reviewed and adjusted through each budget adjustment. The dark pink bars in the graph are grant funds that the city has been awarded. Grant processes are competitive and are not guaranteed revenues. This graph only reflects grants that have been awarded to the city and does not reflect grants that we have submitted and not received a notification on, or grants that we intend to apply for. You will also see a separate line item for transportation benefit district revenues, which is a new funding source that we were able to use this year. These next two slides show the new funding that we have received this past year through various funding sources. Some are existing projects that are currently in design, and we have secured construction funding for, and some are new projects. These projects include the Southwest 43rd Street Improvements Project, the Lake Washington Boulevard Hawk Signal, the Sunset Trail Project, Brainerd Avenue Corridor Improvements Phase 5, the Southwest 7th Street Corridor Safety Improvements, Citywide Vision Zero Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, and the Northeast 44th Street I-405 Park and Ride. There were five new projects or programs added this year, three of which we have received outside funding for and were discussed in the previous slides, and the other two include the arterial rehabilitation program and the Duval Hawk Signal. Transportation continues to be very busy with projects lined up for construction and design, and more detail can be found on each of the individual pages in the TIP document. We wanted to highlight a couple of our large capital projects that will be in design this year and next year. That includes the Sunset Trail Project, which is currently in design, gearing up for a ride-of-way obligation most likely in 2026, and also a drawing of the Northeast 44th Park and Ride. This slide is intended to highlight projects that will be in construction in 2025. Many of these projects are finishing up design work this year, leading to a relatively heavy construction year next year. This final slide here showcases some of our completed or nearly completed projects for this year. This includes the Park Avenue North Extension, the Highlands to Landing Project, and the Slurry Seal, which is a part of our street overlay program. Recommended action for this evening is to approve the annual updates to the 2025-2030 TIP and to present the resolution for reading and adoption, which is on the agenda later under legislation. Now we'll open it up for any questions.
Questions? Great job. Thank you. All right, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I say unless we have anyone else or any other correspondence, I would go ahead and move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the public hearing be closed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. And I do want to point out that we had no correspondence, and nobody signed up. All right, on to our second public hearing, the 2025 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Lori Fleming will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and the public. Tonight, we're having a public hearing on the proposed use of our 2025 Community Development Block Grant Funds. The, shorten it down to CDBG, these are federal funds that we get from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they must be used to serve low and moderate income persons. The city of Renton is a joint agreement city, which is a special designation that is used for a direct entitlement city that partners with their county for grant administration. Renton is part of the larger King County CDBG consortium. These federal funds come with many regulations, lots of restrictions, involve lots of planning, environmental review, Davis Bacon Wage monitoring, et cetera, and we're actually quite lucky to have King County as our partner in, you know, going through all these regulations. For 2025, our direct entitlement is just over $661,000. King County does take some of that out. They take 25% out to support their King County Housing Repair Program. 5% is for the Housing Stability Program, which is a rent assistance program, and both of those amounts do directly serve Renton residents, and we actually get more money, they spend more money on us than we actually contribute to them. So we definitely get our money's worth on those two programs. And then they do keep a little bit for administration, which is well worth it. That leaves about $384,000 available that we do need to allocate. We do about $66,000 for city staff time, mostly for myself, and then the rest we do for capital projects. And for 2025, we're proposing that $317,000 go to the Dawn Person Renton Senior Activity Center Improvement Project. And that will supplement funding that we gave for 2024. So in 2024, here's some previous allocations. In 2024, this year, we also gave CDBG funds to the Renton Senior Center Improvement Project, focusing on the roof. We also had some CDBG coronavirus funding that is being used at the senior center for the HVAC project there. Both of those projects will be happening later this year, the design part. And then even further back, we did Downtown Streetscapes, Phase 2 along Williams Ave, and then even before that Downtown Streetscapes along Wells Avenue. A little more detail on the senior center project. It will include replacement of the roof, replacement of the HVAC inside and outside, and new siding on the, on the building. We're able to use the funding at the senior center because seniors are a presumed low moderate income group. The senior center is also about 45 years old, and so is definitely in need of some improvements and some upgrades. And then using the 2025 CDBG funds, we're able to combine it with the 2024 CDBG and the coronavirus funds to have a kind of an all-encompassed project. The CDBG requires a contingency plan, and so if we get more or less funding than we're anticipating, we'll put the planning and administration funds to the maximum allowable, and then any increases or decreases will be to the senior center activity project. So tonight, we are to hold a public hearing to get public comment and provide any comments to these proposed actions, and then they're asking the council then to put this on the consent agenda. To refer, it is on the consent agenda to refer to the Finance Committee next week. And any questions?
Questions at this time?
Mayor? Hearing no questions, I move to close the public hearing.
Before we close the public hearing, do we have any correspondence?
Received no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we do have one person signed up to speak. Diane Dobson?
Evening, City Council, I'm here. Diane Dobson, the Chamber of Commerce. So I want to first express my support for the much-needed improvements at the Renton Senior Center. Our seniors deserve a safe and comfortable place, and projects like the roofing and HVAC upgrades are important. However, I'd like to respectfully question the use of the Community Development Block Grant Funds for these projects again in the future. It was my recollection to just confirm that the funding for the roofing and HVAC upgrades has already been allocated in the 2024 budget, and even in years past with the COVID relief funds. Those are the ones that could have been used with the business grants, but go into the senior center as well. So given this, I believe it's worth considering whether additional CDBG funds are necessary for the projects, or if alternate funding sources could cover any of those remaining costs out there. CDBG funds are a vital resource for addressing broader community needs, especially for low and moderate income residents, and it has strict guidelines upon it. But beyond the senior center, the funds could support economic development activities such as small business grants, job training programs, or commercial revitalization efforts in low-income neighborhoods. They can also be used for eliminating blight, like demolishing the dilapidated buildings on the corner of Sixth and Park, or remediating neighborhoods to improve safety and neighborhood appearance. By spreading the benefit of these funds across various groups and demographics, I believe we can continue to support the low and moderate income residents, prevent slum conditions, and address urgent community needs. So I would encourage the council to review the funding for the senior center and consider how the CDBG funds might serve a broader array of projects for the benefit of more of our residents. And I apologize for not coming forward before I didn't read the agenda to see that there was a public hearing on this tonight, so spoke out while the opportunity presented itself. Thank you.
Wish the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Albertson.
Move to close, close the public hearing.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Albertson, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that we close the public hearing. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, hearing is closed. All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. The Renton Police Department is in partnership with the Renton Regional Fire Authority and Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting a senior police and fire community academy from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Dawn Person Senior Activity Center on October 17th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. The academy topics include police and fire operations, CPR, choking, AED usage, home safety, scams and fraud prevention, current drug trends, and a police K-9 unit. Additional police department-sponsored events will take place later this fall. Please watch for more details closer to those event dates. And information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentnoah.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. We do have a few people signed up to speak tonight. Few reminders. First, all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. Also, if you would like a response, if it's requested, please give us your information, your email address. Each speaker will be given three minutes. There's a timer right in front of you. When I call your name, please step up and give your name and city of address, or city of address. First up is Sadie Santana. Oh, Sadie Santana, okay. Christina Hayworth? Nope, no Christine Hayworth, okay. Elaine Chan?
Oh, I can take those.
Good evening. I'm here today to raise a critical public safety concern and an environmental issue. There's a proposal. There's a proposal to build a bus station by King County Metro near my driveway. It's right next to a four way intersection. This is a disaster. My home is just down the street from fire station number 13. This property sits at a dangerous four way intersection where severe accidents happened. And you can testify with the Renton District Police as well as the firefighters. For three years, I've already reached out to King County Metro. I propose moving this driveway to a side entry because my home is on the corner lot, so that it would not conflict with the bus station or the traffic on the main row. Please look at the proposal of the new driveway on the photo. This proposal means a simple change to avoid future disaster. Right now, in the evenings, the bus stops directly in front of my driveway. Why? Because the chaotic four way street intersection. To make matters worse, my driveway sits on a steep 45 degree angle slope, and the danger doesn't show up on 2D maps. So imagine when the public station is built and riders are coming off the bus directly onto my driveway. Just look at the failed city planning from the King County Metro where there's the rapid bus on the corner lot and the entire vehicles end up in flames. Safety issue isn't the only concern. What about the environmental impact on our community? The King County Metro is proposing to build a bus station over my septic system. If they take my front yard and make this a bus station, the sewage will inevitably steep into the 108th Avenue Southeast, and that's a major public street. So this proposed a significant health concern for our entire district. I've requested environmental impact documentation from King County Metro. And my request has fallen to deaf ears. Yet somehow, this location is still being considered as a proper site for the public transit station. I stand here today not just for myself, but for the community, urging you to act on these very real safety and environmental risks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nico Chan.
Good job, girl. Okay, let's go. Come on down.
All right. Next up is C. Chan.
Yeah, so they'll get them tomorrow. Yeah, they'll be sent out. Yeah, thank you. Oops.
Good evening, members of the council. I was hoping that the documentation we provided today from experts would be able to be distributed so that you could be fully informed and it would be in front of you. But my name's C. Chan. I've been in the service for almost two decades now. Been a Key Club Kowanian even longer. We're facing a situation because the King County Metro decided that our home would be the perfect location for a rapid ride bus station, and they alleged that Renton City actually encouraged this, even though, if you can see from the first picture, there's a huge vacant parcel of land, 30, 40 acres, that is owned by King County. And we, it's spoken to some members of the council here who had raised it to the attention of the mayor that it seems like the city hasn't even been informed that this is happening. And yet, the metro alleges that it was the council that encouraged our location, our home, to be selected. As many of you know, having come from service families, it is extremely disruptive to be constantly on the move, but we've made Renton our home for almost the decade that we've lived here. We operate a summer program for youth in need in Cedar River. And I work with many of the veteran organizations of the city. If you'll look, we had to, owing to the poor communication from King County Metro, we had to, at our own expense, seek expert testimony from civil engineers, from architects. And in the first picture, you'll see there's an arrow pointing to where our house is located, and the first proposed alternative site, which would be the safest, because pedestrians would not be having to navigate a busy intersection, but it would be only two way traffic rather than four way traffic that they're dealing with. Not to mention, if you'll look after the testimony of one of our witness experts, there are two alternative locations, in addition to the third one that I just mentioned, that would be much preferred, because no family in Renton would have to be displaced. There would be no disruption to our property, one of which being that vacant parcel, which the expert said is the recommended new bus stop at the mid block location. And you'll see that in the information that you'll be provided tomorrow, including a bus stop at the far side location across the street where the neighbor's actually been trying to sell for a good many number of years. You know, as y'all know, aside from the moral implications of King County continuing a legacy of systemic abuse and injustices to marginalized communities, such as the one I belong to as a fifth generation Chinese American, this condemnation should not be allowed to proceed because there are clear alternatives just from visibly looking at it. And I want to also add that being originally raised from New York City, New Jersey, I could not be more supportive of improvements to our community and public transportation infrastructure. But the fact that they seem to have chosen our family simply because it is perhaps the easiest path and path of least resistance, because we're just a working class family with limited means, and to, to challenge this is just simply immoral. And if given the opportunity, I hope the council here and, and yourself, Mayor, would please offer the time to please look into the situation so that we can have Metro engage with us in, in finding an amicable solution that works to the betterment of the entire Renton community. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you. And yeah, I did receive your email last week and forwarded it to staff. And, and once staff gets a chance to look at it, they will inform myself and the rest of the council. So we will be replying to your email at some point here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Gabriel Jones.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Gabriel Jones, a member of this wonderful city's equity commission, but as usual, I come speaking my own mind of my own opinions. I'm speaking again about the migrant camps and asylum seeker camps out in Kent and Seattle. For a little time, a little timeframe, a couple of weeks ago, we knew a sweep was coming. We had a note posted on the entrance to the camp saying that they could be swept at any time, that anyone there could be arrested anytime. A guillotine hanging over the heads of children and parents just trying to survive that we knew could happen at any time. 7:00 a.m., a couple of weeks back, it did. 7:00 a.m., almost, well, even before, even before that, a couple of weeks before, volunteers who were bringing food, consistent food, water, and hygiene needs were stopped, were stopped from being let in. We had to find ways to make sure they could get the stuff they needed while they're being blocked. Then at 7:00 a.m., a sweep happened. They were people who had nowhere to go, nowhere, no plans where they could do, were told they had to go somewhere else. They eventually, doing everything they could, trying to find hotel vouchers from donations from people, mutual aid groups, able to find hotels, soon that money ran out. They were, they were lucky enough to have a park in Seattle to set up at. I spent all day bussing people, helping drive people there, get supplies. Within 24, within, actually, within 12 hours, 7:00 a.m., the exact next day, they were swept again, back to hotels where they may be find place. I would love to see this council work with other cities to find solutions for this, because if you look at all the cities, it's not hard to feel like our city might be next. Our city might need people who are in help, and I don't want it to be a situation where we are vastly unprepared and we end up pushing them somewhere else. These city, these people need help. They are people who are fleeing their countries, they're people who are doing incredibly brave things, these are people from all over who need support, and I feel like we've constantly done everything we can to push them out of the way. We need to be able to make a change for these people, and I would love to see not only what we can do in our own, but also working with others. There are a lot of awesome cities who can do a lot of great stuff, so I'd love to see what we can do to help these people. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Diane Dobson.
So I'm back again to share the important work some of our community members are doing, and the honor the Renton Chamber of Commerce has during domestic violence awareness this month to raise awareness and provide resources to those affected by domestic violence. Throughout October, we are hosting an education series that features expert speakers covering critical topics related to domestic violence. The series includes Tina Harris from the Renton Police Department, who discusses power and control dynamics in abusive relationships; Shell Hansiger Dancio from the King County Prosecutor's Office, who will demystify the protection order process and dispel common mess; Daniel Wong from the Real Time Dynamics, leading a session on firearm safety if someone chooses to use that as a tool of self-defense; Julia Valencia from Raider Tactical, offering strategies on mindset, safety planning, and self-defense tactics; and McJolly from Risk Solutions Unlimited, helping individuals recognize red flags and abusive relationships, and access vetted resources. Our goal is to equip the community with the knowledge, tools, and resources needed to support survivors and prevent domestic violence. Beyond October, the chamber will continue to collaborate with these local partners to provide ongoing support from legal aid and shelter and counseling services that we hear about, all of the services provided. I've sent our schedule to the, to the council and the administration. I would ask for your support in spreading the word of these resources, as I'm sure you are all champions in your own rights, to prevent or eliminate domestic violence in our community. Together, we can create a safer, more compassionate Renton, and I thank you for your time and for continuing to support these agencies doing this critical work.
All right, thank you. Next up, I think that's all our speakers, yeah. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. There are 14 items for council's consideration. Are there any that you'd like pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
Hearing none, move to approve the consent agenda as published.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council approved the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Right, motion carries. Next up is unfinished business, Councilmember Perez. All right, Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGervin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has two reports to present.
A Transportation Aviation Committee committee report, the first is regarding a contract with Dow. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute the contract with Dow LLC for architectural and engineering master professional services from October 2024 through December 2027 in an amount not to exceed $250,000. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGervin.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGervin, second by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
The next report is also an agreement for A and E Services from Kim Lee Horn and Associates. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the master professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates from October 2024 to December 2027 in an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Councilmember McGervin.
Yes, if this one sounded similar to the last one, that's because it is, except the scope of work is different, so they're not duplicating the work. This is divide and conquer. So with that, I'll move the council approve the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGervin, second by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to legislation. We have one resolution for...
Hey, the resolution is regarding the six year transportation improvement program. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, updating and extending Renton's six year transportation improvement program for the years 2025 through 2030.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGervin.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGervin, second by Councilmember Van, that the adopt, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to new business. Councilmember Perez.
On Monday, October 14th, at 3:45 p.m., the Community Development Committee will meet in the council conference room and via video conference. There are two items on the agenda, Dr. Mike King-Groove A and Mediterranean CD.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Alberston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few items. On Monday, October 14th, at 1:30 p.m., the Community Services Committee will meet in the council conference room and via video conference. Four items on the agenda, the appointment of Juanita Stalwart to the Parks Commission, number two, Renton Student Health Hub update, number three, Piazza Park update, number four, emerging issues in parks and recreation. And then at 4 o'clock on the 14th, not 4:15, 4:45, I cannot read tonight, the committee of the whole will meet in council chambers and via video conference. One item, the 2025-2026 biennial budget, department presentation specifically on that day, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and the Police Department will present their presentations. And then at 7 o'clock, the regular council meeting held here in council chambers and via video conference, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to take the opportunity to share that one of our nonprofits, Project Be Free, which gave a beautiful speech tonight, will be having their first annual Domestic Violence Awareness Gala fundraiser on October 19th.
You. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, October 14th, at 2:30 p.m., the Finance Committee will be meeting here, excuse me, in the council conference room and via video conference. We have 13 items on the agenda, so please bear with me as I make my way through these. First is a temporary waiver of the city center garage, city center garage parking fees for 2025. Second, Amendment 5 to CAG 2022-376 with Graham Baba Architects for the Piazza Plaza remodel, landscaping, and civil engineering work. Three is a change order, number 22 to CAG 22163 with Piveta Brothers Construction for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase 4 Project. Number four is the Blake Funding Interagency Reimbursement Agreement between the Administrative Office of the Courts and Municipal Court. Five, Amendment number three to CAG 22-336 with WSP USA for the May Creek Trail South Design and Permitting Services. Six is proposed use of the 2025 CDBG grant blocks, block grants that we spoke, heard about this earlier. Seventh is the renewal of the Stop Loss Coverage with Cementra Insurance for 2025. Eight is the approval of Kaiser Permanente Healthcare Premium Rates for 2025. Eight is the approval of Kaiser Permanente healthcare premium rates for 2025. Nine is the renewal of the Healthcare Management Administration, HMA, agreement for 2025. 10 is the utility bill leak adjustment request for the vitamin shop. 11 is the 2024 year-end budget amendments and 2024 salary table amendment ordinance. 12 is vouchers, and lucky number 13 is emerging issues in finance. And that is what I have for you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Busy Monday. All right, Councilmember McGurven.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, what's, what's the, what's the council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Albertson, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Stay, say nay. We adjourn.